We're good. Okay, we'd like to call the Town and Niski planning and zoning commission meeting for April 15th, 2024. To order. Ms. Brigami, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Leslie, we couldn't hear you.
Oh, I couldn't hear her.
Okay, yep, now we can hear.
Present. Like to move to approval of the minutes from March 11th, 2024. Get a motion. Okay, a motion from Ms. Strang.
Second.
Second for Mr. Khan. Any corrections or discussion? I had one on page, on page six, line 249. There was indentation with the number two, says zoning code amendments and quotes Airbnb regulation requests. Not sure if that was just a copy and paste that jumped in there.
I think that was directly off the old agenda.
Was it?
Yeah, but we can change it if you want to.
Yeah, I figured just, just strike that line.
That's fine.
Any other modifications or questions? Can we get a vote on the minor modification to strike line 249?
Favor.
Second.
Okay. Move by Mr. Khan, second by Ms. Boloski. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain or opposed?
Do you want to take a vote on the minutes?
We're gonna take a vote on the minutes. Okay, alright. And all in favor of the modified minutes as submitted?
Aye.
By saying aye, okay. And any opposed? Okay, next up are public hearings, which we have none. And we're going to open up to privilege of the floor. If anybody has any concerns on the town Niskiuna, anything for planning or zoning, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Laura, just to let you know, we don't have a shot online of the, of the boardroom.
Oh, Jed, can you make sure you turn the video of the boardroom on, please? Yeah, you should have it now.
We've got it, thank you.
Much better.
It's open.
I'm totally distressed now because it gave my attention this afternoon that a second.
Can you use the microphone? Just state your name, your name and address too, for the record.
My name is Marion Jackson. I live at 940 Inman Road. They call me Jet. And came to my attention this afternoon that we have another crisis. And that is that across the street. Has everyone seen this flyer that we've been sending out? I'll give it to you.
Yeah. Hello?
That the house across the street has now been put up as a B and B. And I don't have the address. It might be on the flyer that I gave you. It's across from 1230 Milton Keynes. We've developed a committee to confront this issue. I believe today, starting today, for a week. The house at 1230 Milton Keynes will be rented for a week. It's also posted or rented for 17 or 16 weekends this summer. And we had a lot of commotion, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, for three nights. It looked like Las Vegas, the Taj Mahal, or whatever you want to call it. Very noisy and very upsetting. For security reasons and vandalism, I'm concerned with who may be attending these functions. But I'm concerned primarily because we live in an R1 district. And these homes, any of the homes in our community are not zone commercial. And so we would like to put an end to it before it becomes even more of an epidemic in the town of Niskiuna. And I'm counting on you all to protect us. We pay a lot of taxes. And we don't understand how it is that even the board that we met with a couple of weeks ago, they didn't even know that this situation existed. It's shocking. And I'd like for you to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how you guys doing? Mario Pantolone, 930 Inman Road. I know the board is aware of the short-term rental crisis and you guys know. And we do appreciate everything that the town is doing. And hopefully we can put a stop to it. Not only for us in the Inman Road neighborhood, but other parts of the town also. It's not just about Inman Road and Milton Keynes. It's about you guys, your neighborhood, or any place in town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Rose Parisi. This is my husband, Pat. Thanks for coming. So I saw the article in the paper about what the neighborhood is dealing with. And I basically came to support them. So I was here a year ago, almost in April, for the same reason. So on Rosendale, on Roughner Road, there's Airbnb, Laura's familiar with it. And I spoke to the board a year ago, almost happened to you because I know how upsetting it is. So it's same thing, cars pulling up, you don't know who, who's supposed to be there, who, when they're leaving, double parked cars, sometimes trash. And I know that the board had said, you have to call the police, you have to call if there's any problems. And there was never something that big, but like neighbors would say, Mary Rose, I'm so uncomfortable with this. And so I would come here and they said it's going to be a long process. But recently, when I called the town, they said that really nothing's been done in a year because it's only two or three houses. And the main thing I just want to say about that is every person's important. So I empathize. I don't have little children, but when you see pickup trucks pull up and, you know, everyone's ready to party, it's a little uncomfortable because of the type of neighborhood we're in. So I spoke to the owner and she's, I said, what's going on? And she said to me, is this upsetting to you? And I said, yeah. So she said, would it be better if I rented for a year? And I said, that would be great. And she didn't. So, but we're seeing U-Hauls pulling up now. And so I have no idea what's happening next, but yeah. So that's it.
I didn't prepare any comments, but I would like to emphasize that this is a security risk. These people are not vetted, they're not vetted in any way. Not that, that that's something that's done, you know, it's just a neighborhood. But there's no way to get to know anyone. There are, it's a different crowd. The houses are rented at full capacity, usually for the purposes of partying. Alcohol is present. And I think it's, it could be a security risk to the children in the neighborhood.
And this house is directly across the street from an elementary bus stop. So I just spoke to her mom, I'm like, do you know what goes on in that house? And she didn't know. So I mean, people should be aware, but yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, not at all. So I know that, you know, New York City hasn't acted certain restrictions on these short-term rentals. I'm sure that they have good reason for it. I don't know what their reasons are. But I, I think that this needs to be looked at and some type of regulation or some type of way of addressing this should be, should be done by, by you guys. And we count on you guys to, to do that.
No, and we can help. I really don't know what to do. I'm calm because now there's one person there and I see the same car. But I, I can empathize with all these people. It's, we aren't cold of that, I think, so. Yeah, that's it. Thank you so much.
Could we just get your address for the record, please?
1362 Roughner, RUFFN, ER Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I, last thing, I just want to say that I just came here to find out the rules last year. And I was surprised that they were allowed to do that. Because I did feel unsafe. I did call the police once and they said, don't worry, if something happens, we'll be right there. But you, it's not like you can switch phone numbers with a neighbor or, you know, you just have no ideas who's pulling in, who's pulling out. But the couple I, that bought the house, they didn't want to cause trouble for them. Maybe they need the income, I don't know. But if they have a new person coming in next week, I have no idea if they're supposed to be there or where they're from. Sometimes you see plates from different states and it's just not the culture of the neighborhood. So, thank you. Laura, thanks for taking on my call.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for privilege of the floor?
Hi, my name's Laura Scordino. I live at 1240 Milton Keynes, next door to this place. I'm not sure where this other place is that we have to hand out on. I don't think it's across the street, but it's somewhere in Niskiuna. I mean, it's a new, new posting, it looks like. I just, like, are we at the right spot? Is this where we're supposed to be? Okay, so then are we going to talk about this later or are we just, okay? Okay, so I mean, we just kind of like want to make the point that I think you guys are aware of that. You know, we the majority of Niskiuna, the vast majority of Niskiuna, I think is here to live in Niskiuna because it's a nice place to live. And we want to, you know, raise our kids and have a, you know, residential atmosphere when we're at our house. You know, we didn't, it's kind of different if you are looking at houses and you look and you see, oh, there's a hotel next door. You would think about that before you bought the house. But it's different when somebody moves in and then they're basically running a hotel, whether it's considered a business or not currently. It clearly seems like it is a business. So I don't know, like, when you want to get into all the details. I mean, somebody said that the people are living there. I don't know that they're actually living there or if that makes a difference. We live next door to them. So, you know, we see some people occasionally coming and going, but it definitely doesn't seem like somebody's like established living there. And certainly if they're renting it out for 16 of the next 20 weekends, they're not living there any of that time. So, I mean, I think that the, the problems are, you know, as, as has already been stated, it's difficult to know. Like, we have three small kids. We live in a cul-de-sac of eight houses. And so we know every car before that would come up and down the street. And so when you saw somebody coming, you like knew how they drove and you knew, you know, you just felt safer. And you felt like you could protect your kids. Not having any idea who's living next door or what kind of party is occurring, just from like that standpoint is hard. You know, they've also, in these various advertisements, said it's a rich community, like come stay here, which, you know, automatically you feel like some kind of target. So, you know, we've had people come and install an alarm system. And you know, I just, I just don't think that this is what Niskiuna wants. We don't need the, I don't think the town as a whole is a tourist destination. So I don't think that catering to people's ability to have an Airbnb in their house makes sense for the vast majority of the Niskiuna population. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here for privilege of the floor?
May I speak again?
Sure.
I'm a Jackson from Troy Road. And years ago, we fought very hard, the Troy Road Neighborhood Association, to keep the Troy Road residential. We didn't want it to look like Central Avenue and we didn't want any zoning changes on the road. And we were able to achieve that, although the vote was only four to three. We're going to work hard to try and prevent this happening in the town. And I hope that you can really move the process along. It was a long process to keep Troy Road residential. And I think we did a great service for the town of Niskiuna. And I hope that you will support and protect us. Those that have lived in Niskiuna all, I've been there all my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else present for privilege of the floor? Do we have anyone online?
Yeah. There's, there's a number of applicants online, but is there anybody online who just wanted to speak on a privilege of the floor? Nope.
No, okay. Alright, we're going to close privilege of the floor and move on to the next item, which is unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First up is resolution number 2024-10. This is a resolution for site plan approval for a monument directory sign at Tall Oaks Apartments at 2475 Brookshire Drive. I will read the resolution. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the planning board and zoning commission has determined that the proposed sign waiver, as described above, would have a minimum negative effect on aesthetics and be it further resolved, the planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant said waiver to allow for the signage as described in the aforementioned sign drawing. And be it further resolved that the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves this site plan. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boloski. Any discussion?
No.
And is the applicant online?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, Mr. Wheeler?
How are you?
Good. So just to quickly summarize, the directory sign is being placed at the, basically at the end of the parking lot and the grass area where the fire lane pull-off is. We, after a couple of discussions, thought that this was probably one of the best areas and the applicant seems on board with this. Is that correct?
Yep, looks good.
Anything to add to that?
Uh, no.
Yeah, I was just saying it's a much better placement of the sign from what originally was there. And so I support the current resolution as drafted and signed location.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Ramy, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Strang?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Boloski?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Acting Chairman Darpino?
Aye. Okay, this is approved.
Chairman, do you want to just skip to the zoning code updates report real fast so that, because it's all the way at the end of the agenda for anybody who was staying to listen?
Sure.
It's a little bit outside of practice, but that's all right, I think we could.
Just because we have so many.
Understood.
For tonight and for children.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I mean, so I just, at the March 11th meeting, we talked about opening up the zoning code amendments to start working on short-term rental regulations. And in that time, the neighbors obviously have come and shared additional concerns with the town Niskiuna. The town has reached out to Airbnb directly to get best practices from them and to learn about how to do enforcement, both with town code and with Airbnb. And I know that the town is working on a kind of short-term solution, which would be to mitigate any of the, you know, happenings at the Airbnb while we work on updating a code. And then the long-term solution would be to update the code. So the code that we looked at before was the Lake Placid code, which I included in the packet for last month. Since then, the Airbnb government liaison representative has sent us a lot of best practices for government regulation, which are really good. So I've been going through that with the supervisor's office. And I also received another code from a different resident to take a look at. So what I'm proposing would be either at the next meeting or the meeting after that, looking at a combination of those things as a place to start.
So, so Laura, do you have a sense, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Hess too, do you have a sense of what are, what are the extremes and the boundary that we have? From saying absolutely no to Airbnb, to what extent it is that it can be allowed or regulated in the code?
Uh, well, you can, can't prohibit something outright in all places of the town of Niskiuna that isn't allowed. So, but you can regulate place, time, something, stuff like that. And the regulations range, like the ones that we looked at for Lake Placid are more regulatory based on safety. And I know that there's some other towns that like require a special use permit for an Airbnb or something like that. So there's a number of different ways to look at it.
Okay, I mean, I remember one time you said, I think it was last meeting, it might have been in a minutes, right? That Niskiuna currently doesn't differentiate between a
Day and
Prolonged
Years.
For a prolonged
Correct.
Rental and a one-day rental.
Yeah, so any code we would adopt, we'd have to make sure it doesn't negatively impact, obviously, the long-term rental people that have been living in the town some days for
Right, right.
As long as we have, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Laura, I'd just like to, I'm just curious, we can't, we can't, I'm presuming that we can't outright ban Airbnb.
You couldn't outright ban Airbnb throughout the entire town limits.
Okay, so, and I could be putting the cart way before the horse here, but for the sake of argument, let's just say we put certain stipulations and certain rules based on what we all come to a consensus that we think is, you know, are good practices. Can we still possibly assume that this area of Milton Keynes may still be an Airbnb?
It could. I mean, we have to look at those regulations to see how that would work. And I always get a little concerned with, I mentioned this before, enforcement, because a lot of enforcement of these Airbnb issues is going to be after hours. And I'm not expecting the police department to pick up enforcement. So how we would get the building inspectors notified in order to be able to go out and possibly enforce some of the Airbnb codes, if we were to adopt them, is definitely something that we need to discuss during adoption. I think the last couple of times we set it aside was partly because it's, 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 we got to figure out, if we're going to adopt a code that says you can only have six cars in your driveway, then we've got to figure out a way to enforce only having six cars. And, you know, some of that might just be reaching out to other towns and seeing what they've done. But what I don't want to do is adopt a code that is on the books and then.
Yeah, so Laura, you made a comprehensive comment, right? You, you said to the effect that we can't outright prohibit Airbnb across all of Niskiuna. But I'm just going a little bit in between the lines of what you said. Is it possible to prohibit it on a zone basis?
You know, I'm not, I don't know. But I haven't really, but
And that's why I know, I know.
Typically, yes.
So I'm not, I don't want to shoot from the hip.
Right.
So I can get back to you with the comprehension.
Yeah, and I'm trying to keep it as objective as we can, so I appreciate that comment.
But so Laura has raised the, an important, that's one end of the spectrum, which is the outright ban will not work, right? Regardless of what use it is that you want to ban almost, that doesn't work. So there's going to have to be a rational basis for the decision. And if we don't allow it everywhere, there's going to, we're going to need to substantiate why it's okay in some zones and not others.
Right.
Would, would the constituting something not being Airbnb in an area or a specific distance from a school be something that would be considered? And if so, being that we have so many community schools that are placed strategically throughout Niskiuna, would that then eliminate a large area of Niskiuna from having Airbnbs?
Think this would be helpful, that falls in that area, I don't want to shoot from the hip. But I would like to get questions from the board so that when I come back, I can have real answers for you. So I'm, I'm happy to look at that specific issue and, and the other issues that this board feels would be helpful for making a determination.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Hess. I mean, at least for me, my question would be, is there a rational zone-based approach? Because I think our definitions of R1, R2, et cetera, although it's a, it's a area-based density definition, right? You know, you know, is there a possibility for just a, you know, frequency of occupancy definition, right? That could be attached to those zones?
Sure, but that speaks to the issue that Laura raised, which is if it's going to be frequency of occupancy, who's keeping track, right?
Yeah, no, 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 I, I get the enforceability part very well, but I think we need, so I think for the community that spoke and others. So we have, we have had this on the agenda for the past, I think, three or four meetings. And that's actually a repeat of something that we had done before.
Yeah.
Several years ago. So it's something that we've been looking at. And, you know, as you can tell by the conversation we're having, this is not going to be easy. It's not going to be something that we can say one way or the other, yes to all or no to all, right? So I think we need to go through the process of identifying what our parameters are.
Well, and I also think it's important that we look, I know you said you've been gathering them. I, I'm very interested in seeing how other towns are addressing this.
Yeah, so I think we have the Lake Placid one, right?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, but Lake Placid's like Saratoga, I mean, it's much more of a
No, no, I, I got you, no, no, I think, yeah.
I think primarily residential communities would be helpful of our size and scope.
Yeah, there, there is one other question I have and it, it's funny, I've been in Niskiuna this long and I only know this one anecdotally, so I guess I'll ask it officially. I was, I was always told anecdotally that Niskiuna does not allow a hotel.
Uh, we have allowance for hotels in one zoning district, I think. I believe it's CN, actually. Because there was originally going to be an inn across the street from ShopRite. And I have occasionally talked to an owner who's, who still owns property across the street of whether or not they could put a hotel there.
So, so is the rationale for that a place where we could start? The rationale that led to us having a hotel allowed in only one zone?
Uh, you know, I, we really have to do some research because that zone, I don't think allows for single-family homes.
Right.
So I don't know that that would be de facto a prohibit. I mean, you gotta, we, we can't shoot from the hip.
No, 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 so, so.
Okay, but still, definitely, that's a great question.
Yeah, it's a question, yeah.
I'm, yeah, let's get the questions so we can get real answers. But I think Laura might have raised a real question is, we, we have to be careful that it's facts and circumstances, right? So if you have a zone, but no property in that zone can meet the definition, then it's not going to pass the, you know.
Right, right, yeah, and I appreciate your comment, Mr. Hess, that, and this is sincerely where I'm coming from. You know, I just like to, like the journey we've been on in the past few meetings, we have to come to an understanding of what all of our parameters are. Right, within, within the letter and spirit of the law and the code of the town.
Yeah.
And the kind of trend that we'd like to see happen or not happen within town, right? And, and that's, that's just where I'm coming from. But I do think, you know, for the people who spoke in public, again, we have started looking at it. I think we need to see this one through to an end this time around.
Definitely.
Right, and there is, there is a chart that shows each zoning area with the permitted uses in it. I don't, I think it's an appendix in the
Yeah, it's there.
That would be helpful too, if we had a copy of that, that way we can talk about, okay, what residential zoning ones are affected, what would be applicable, what wouldn't be applicable. And then look at those uses from there.
Yeah, so again, short-term, it's probably going to be working with Airbnb to address the complaints, but long-term would be adoption of the code. And adoption of the zoning code, just so everyone understands, is a secret action and it requires coordination with the county. So the reason it's kind of a long haul is because once we get the code the way we like it. So the reason it's kind of a long haul is because once we get the code the way we like it, then we have to send it to the CAC, have them make sure that it doesn't have environmental impacts. With their recommendation, we have to have a public hearing, goes to the town board, they have to have a public hearing, um, goes for adoption, so there's a lot of steps that come with the process of opening up the zoning code.
Alright.
And not that this is that important for people who are listening for short-term rentals, but once we have the zoning code updated, open, because it's so hard to open, we do add other things that need to be amended inside of it as well.
Alright Laura, so I think that latter part of what you said, it makes sense to me at least, but I want to go back to something you said right before that. So you, you, the planning department right now is interacting with Airbnb in a short-term solution?
Actually, the supervisor's office has been
Okay, good, because I don't think actually it's a planning department action, right? It's gotta be someone else in the
Yeah, no, if there's a code violation, then the building department will go out. But no, the supervisor's office has been working directly with Airbnb to, because Airbnb, like, and this is just what I have understood from speaking with the supervisor's office, but Airbnb has its own hotline for complaints. It actually doesn't allow for parties, so if it gets enough complaints, it'll self-police its own rentals and stuff like that. But it's, that's all really being handled supervisor's office, uh, level. And I know that they're coming out with a lot of information to help the residents, I just don't have that yet. I am working on the long-term solution of working with you guys for a code update.
Right, which is the only thing that's really under our building planning department and the Planning and Zoning Commission, our purview just relative to the code and relative to coming up with a rational regulation, right? Anything else, short-term, current enforcement, complaints, anything else? That's not you, that's not this board.
Unless it's a code violation, but
Right, unless it's a code violation.
But nothing we've heard so far. Go ahead, Leslie.
Um, my understanding is Airbnb isn't the only company doing this kind of thing.
Right.
Except, if, there has to be a solution that encompasses all of them. And I still think there needs to be a limitation on how many days of the year a property can be rented out this way. Because it's been becoming a business. And I've mentioned before, I don't think people who are renting their house out for more than half a year should get the homestead tax break and that kind of thing. I think we need to look at all of that.
Um, right, well, we mentioned this at the March eleventh meeting. Zoning code is not going to regulate the tax breaks, that's gonna have to be something that is beyond the scope of the planning board. But, you know, if in the regulations that we look at, it sets a minimum amount of time that someone can rent, if we're allowed to do that, you know, that's something that we can look at.
And it's a different issue, but we don't allow homeowners to rent out a room.
We do not.
Or rent out their whole home or several rooms on a short-term basis. I, I, I think we should look at that provision as well because there are cases where being able to take in a border is the difference between somebody keeping their home or losing it. And it often affects seniors. And in the past, it's been done and it's been very helpful for the seniors. I know it's a different issue, but in my mind, it's related.
Okay.
There needs some, some consistency.
Yeah.
They'll let you out willy-nilly, but a homeowner can't take in a border that they're gonna live with and have to deal with on a daily basis, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so just so that I make sure I'm hearing you correctly, when we're looking at Airbnb short-term regulations, we should stop calling them Airbnb because you are completely correct. There's a lot of different, it's not just Airbnb. But when we're looking at the short-term rental regulations, we should also look at allowances in certain instances for being able to rent rooms under regulation.
Yeah, I mean, taking in a border, in my mind, is a lot more stable than just renting out to various and, some of the other people who you've never met and had no contact with, doing it through a service. Um, whereas if you're the homeowner and you want to rent out a room and maybe share the kitchen, that kind of thing. It's a mutual commitment here, but the homeowner has more control.
Okay, so to Rob's point, think of questions that you want to handle and send them to
Yep, in, in addition to the ones you mentioned tonight, right, because I think you have those, right? Yep.
And then I wrote that one down, Leslie.
And, and I think as a board, we should be committed to seeing this through to an end.
Agreed.
Yeah, I know I said this to Laura before, we've looked at adopting this code twice, for those of you who haven't been on the board.
Yeah, I mean, time's now.
Yep, time, time's now. It's sorry, the privilege of the
I know, the privilege of the floor is closed at this
But you can email it to us and I can share it with the board.
Okay, great, so we're gonna, we're gonna wrap that up and move, um, back to new business. Next up is Resolution 2024-11, a resolution for site plan approval for community garden enhancements, including a new shed for the Glen Eddy at One Glen Eddy Drive. And I'm just gonna give everyone here a minute to walk out, so we don't get that over the recording. Okay, now therefore be it resolved that this planning board and zoning commission finds that the site plan application referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves this site plan. Could I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, uh, second by Ms. Strang. Let's see, is the applicant online?
Yep, on here.
Okay. The glasses, um, just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Nick Zeglin with Environmental Design Partnership.
Okay, great, um, any discussion or comments on the proposed plan?
Nope, I, I can answer any questions, but I don't have anything further.
Looks beautiful.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, it's a, it's a good use and it's, it looks fine, and I think, you know, the sightline from this street, I think it's fine.
Yeah, it's not visible, I think it's, uh, well-executed, uh, it looks like it's cleaning up some of the property too, and it'll be a nice enhancement for the residents.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Pergami, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Blavsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Acting Chairman Darpino?
Aye. Resolution passes. Okay, and the last resolution up is Resolution Number 2024-12, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change to Papa John's Restaurant at 412 Balltown Road. Now therefore here, be hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above-referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan and zoning board of appeals approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant will review the condition of planting beds and trees surrounding the building with a Niskuna tree council and make any changes or upgrades agreed upon during the site visit. Could I get a motion?
So moved?
Motion by Ms. Strang?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blavsky. Do we have anyone from the applicant online?
Yes, hi, Eric P. Ombi, Architect.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah.
Any concerns or discussions?
Yeah, so I had one question, and maybe it's just more clarification. So where did we end up with the size and, and the compliance of the signage?
So, uh, to meet the compliance, they're removing the, uh, the wording that was underneath the logo. Says, uh, better ingredients, better pizza. Uh, so that's being eliminated, which brings the square footage down, uh, to, uh, approximately twenty-one point three two square feet.
Okay, so, so for us, the, the sign that's on page thirty-nine of our packets is the sign that we're gonna be going with.
Correct.
And that sign is within, it's compliant for that location.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's within the square footage of the waiver, it's actually less.
Right, that's the key thing. So I'm glad you said it, right? There was a waiver, it's within the square footage of the waiver.
Right, so it doesn't need any new waivers or new approvals from the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
It was at twenty-nine and a half feet, now it's down to twenty-one point three feet.
Yeah.
And that just comes from really just dropping the better ingredients, better pizza off of it.
Tagline.
Yeah, the tagline.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion items? Okay, Ms. Pergami, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Blavsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Acting Chairman Darpino?
Aye, and resolution's passed. Okay, moving on to discussion items, we're
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to discussion items, we're actually going to move Agenda Item Number Six up to the front, which is twenty-five forty-six Balltown Road, St. Peter's Health, application for a site plan review for new signage. I believe that is, uh, Mr. Wheeler.
Hello?
We wanted to start with this, with this one first, because it actually segues pretty well into seventeen sixty-nine Union Street. Um, so we put those two together. So could you give us a quick recap of the application and the changes to the facade sign?
Yep, uh, so we're requesting a, a sign on the facade of the building. Um, last time we came in at thirty-six square feet, which, uh, the board wasn't in favor of. So, um, and listening to the comments of the board, we've reduced the size of the sign now to sixteen square feet. Um, we feel this is really as small as we could possibly go and still have any visibility from the road. Um, very little impact as it is so small. Um, but the practice really does want to be identified. In addition to the monument sign, there's a small panel that we're gonna put out there. We want to get our, the name on the building as a, you know, to identify that they're in their away-finding, um, method and, you know, really just to get it known to the public that the practice is in the building. So the comments we're listening to and, and hopefully this is a more acceptable solution.
Okay, I'll open up to discussion.
So, so I'm okay with the size coming down, I think that's good. The, the only remaining concern that ties into the next, now next, uh, topic item, right, is has to do with setting a precedence on every tenant within a building wanting a facade sign. Right?
Yeah, I think it's a real concern.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I'm trying to grasp what the basis of it is at the Union Street property.
Yeah, so that second item is also a tenant in a, a commercial medical office building requesting a tenant sign.
Mr. Wheeler, did you have a chance to ask the building owner if other tenants were requesting signs?
Yeah, there's no interest as of now, I can't guarantee that there won't be in the future, but right now there's not.
I'm sorry, are we talking about Balltown Road or Union Street?
No, Balltown.
This is the agenda item for Balltown.
Yeah, it's Agenda, no, number six, Agenda Item Number Six.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I mean, I agree with Mr. Khan, I think the reduction in the sign is, is a good move, you know, going forward. The only thing I think I have a little bit of concern on is that there are some large trees that are on Balltown Road. So the vantage point from where this is taken is not from the traffic standpoint. So I just don't know how much visibility this is going to have at this location. It seems like it's limited, at least in my estimate, depending on which way you're coming. So I don't know if there was any thought or concern, if they have that sign there, you know, is there any advantage to putting it somewhere else on the building, maybe not visible from Balltown Road? If they wanted to have something, you know, as a facade sign?
Um, we, we did look around at the building, this is really the, the best spot, is it a great spot? No, not really, but it is the best spot. Um, this is where you have the most visibility, you know, we drove this and this is the, the, the best spot on the building.
So Tom, can you actually read that sign from Balltown? Because it looks, it, I mean, it definitely reduced since, the reduction in sign size, knowing how far it is from Balltown? I mean, what is the likelihood people are gonna be able to read the words? It looks tiny now to me.
The St. Peter's logo lockup, probably not, but it's, it's, it's part of the branding, the Cardiology Associates. I believe they'll be able to read that.
And I will reiterate that the practice is well-established up there and that the signage would actually just be a distraction for anybody who's driving by. This is directly next to Craig's School, an elementary school. And I think it's a distraction that we shouldn't have. So I, I appreciate the reduction in size, but I'm still opposed.
Can I also ask, because I know we tied this to the other item on the agenda, are there parameters for the Union Street signage that was already permitted that are different than this one? Are we dealing with apples to apples or? Okay, so can someone, yeah, can some, can you explain the difference between the Union Street versus this application?
Well, the, the buildings are in the same zoning, but the Union Street building, you know, was granted area variances to have. So the Union Street building essentially already has four signs. It has, they call them the flying As, they have two flying As on either side of the building. Then they have the branding of the building, the Albany Med Building, and then they have their emergent care. And during the discussions for the approval of seventeen sixty-nine Union Street, the entrance to the emergent care was moved from the side of the building to the front of the building, um, specifically because the planning board was concerned that if there was no entrance on the front of the building, it wouldn't bring life to Union Street. And when that emergent care was moved to the front of the building, there was a lot of concern that, um, people are gonna have a hard time finding it. So it has special signage, it has
Because of the nature of the business.
Yeah, so when, and also it has even special directional signage to get people to the emergent care because originally you're only supposed to go in on the entrance that's closer to Balltown Road and then exit closer to like getting to the city of Skeneckity. And so there's special directional signage to get people to drive an L around the building park and then still walk to the front of the building to go into the emergent care. That's a summary, uh, of that signage. All the signage that's on the building right now is currently approved by variance.
Thank you.
Is the, is the sign, excuse me, I'm sorry, is the sign on Balltown Road, are they, um, for lack of a better terms, are they entitled or permitted to put a building sign up?
So they're entitled to a single eight-foot facade sign. The sixteen feet is still beyond what they're entitled to and at the discretion of the planning board. Um, well, actually, the planning board doesn't have discretion on the additional eight feet. The planning board has discretion on signs on the building, um, but they are allowed an eight-foot sign and then the planning board would make a, a recommendation to the zoning board, um, for the additional eight feet on this signage if they, well, they would make a recommendation if this is what the path the applicant chooses to move forward with.
I, I would, I would be in favor with just of the pylon sign that they have out by the road. I, I'm, I'm struggling to, to find the purpose with the, the building sign, but that's just my opinion.
So to stay on, on task here with Cardiology Associates, I, I think what we can do is we, we kind of got some of the feedback here. Uh, Mr. Wheeler, if you want to go back to the, to the applicant and explain that to them. Uh, we also do need a project lead on this, it's the second time we've seen this. So I think it would be worthwhile to have a board member maybe go to the property, take a look at this, drive by, see what the visibility factor is on it. Um, Ms. Blavsky brought up a good point. The reduction in the sign's size may be restrictive to being seen from the roadway. So I think that that's a question that should be answered, as we do ask out of applicants to sometimes show perspectives or, or sightline, uh, sightline things.
I'd be glad to be a lead on that.
Okay.
Can we also confirm, I don't, Mr. Wheeler, maybe you can do it, that the tenants on the monument sign are the only tenants in the building? Just thinking about precedent and how many people may come back to us for a facade sign if this passes. So is what we're seeing, or maybe Laura knows, what we're seeing on the monument sign currently, I think it's three, are the only three tenants in the building, is that correct?
I, I can confirm that, I'm not positive.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to know.
Okay.
Well, at least four.
Four, okay, at least four, but we don't know that everybody's represented on that sign right now.
Right.
I can get that for next time, get a definite count for you.
Okay.
So I guess what we would need to know, um, Tom, is this is the proposal you want to take forward to the zoning board with the input from the planning board, even though you're still getting mixed, mixed input?
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, this is a compromise, we came down by over half. Uh, yeah, I think, you know, this is a, a compromise, we came down by over half.
So, um, the planning department can make a denial and bring it back to you guys at the twenty-ninth meeting for a recommendation to the zoning board.
Okay.
In the meantime, we did want to tell the applicant that they could proceed with a building permit to replace the monument panel.
Yes.
The monument panel is in conformance with everything, they're just literally popping out something that's incursive and kind of hard to read. And they're replacing it with a panel that's got the branding.
A better design.
So if you guys are okay with that, we could issue a building permit for that. And then we'll issue a denial for the, uh, facade sign.
I'm good.
Alright.
Okay, so we're all set with that one then.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the next one, which will be seventeen sixty-nine Union Street. That's Capital Cardiology in application for site plan review for new signage. Okay, so this is the, um, the medical building on, on Union Street. And the signage there currently is going to exceed eight square feet in area. And there is a chart that was accompanied, um, with this. So basically, this is another one that would have a recommendation that would go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, do we have anyone from the applicant online?
Yep, uh, Jamie Cullertolo, vital sign.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you want to give a quick presentation of a facade sign?
Uh, sure, um, the tenant feels that, um, you know, there's, there's adequate space in the middle there, um, to put their branding and everything that they want. Um, it kind of falls in line with everything else. Um, we did discuss possibly making it smaller. Um, I did discuss that with Clark. Um, but I, I just think if it doesn't keep the size it's at and, and stay consistent with the sizes on each side of it, it might look kind of funny if it's a lot smaller. So I, I think it, if there was going to be a sign there, I think it would make sense for it to be, you know, the same as, as the ones there.
Yeah, so that is a good, it is a good point, because we have two signs that are there. And you wouldn't want to treat one tenant unfairly to the others. Um, I do agree with you that maybe a small sign there would be difficult to read and, and seem out of scale. It, it does create that zone on the facade, perfect, thank you. That area right there, where that would be inserted. So, I mean, there's definitely merit to that statement that this sign could, you know, potentially go in that location.
On page forty-nine, the current depiction in our packet of the monument sign calls it Cardiology Associates of Schenectady. Is that the same thing as the, uh, wall sign that we're under consideration here on Capital Cardiology Associates?
Yeah, are you talking about a tenant panel insert?
Yeah, is, is Capital Cardiology Associates the same as Cardiology Associates of Schenectady?
No, they are not. And I believe the tenant panel they want to replace is the Community Gastr- Gastroenterology. That's, that's the one that would be coming out, I believe.
So there's two cardiology practices in the building?
Yes, there will be, yeah.
Apparently.
No, I think the Balltown one has St. Peters, which is a third, which is a third cardiology. It's the sign at the time, it's with heart disease.
Um, so is there a limit? Like, once this sign goes up, is there a limit to how many signs can be placed on this? Because just from, if you, if you pay attention to, not to be political, but St. Peters and Albany Med often compete for space and precedent. Um, and I just want to know, like, is this gonna be the beginning of, you know, Capital Cardiology, I think is associated with Albany Med, and the other one is St. Peters, is this gonna be constant signs going up?
Yes, I think that is a fundamental concern, right? So I think, you know, from Ms. Gomes's question, you know, if there's a place to draw a boundary, I think we want to draw a boundary now. So I guess I'll ask this question another way, do we have a basis for saying no to the Capital Cardiology and Associates sign?
So, I mean, absolutely, right? They already have a, a lot of variances for signage and, I mean, the, the planning board doesn't have, unless they feel like there's some public benefit that would come from an additional sign. This applicant has been granted a lot of relief on signage and you certainly do not have to allow for any additional signage. Again, it, if the planning board said, no, we don't like this sign, the applicant still has the ability to appeal it to the zoning board.
Right, right, agreed, but it, it, I think this also is a zoning board of appeals.
It would be anyway.
It would be anyway, right?
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm referring to is, in this case, just like with the St. Peters case, it all comes down to what our recommendation would be.
Right.
The suitability and the, um, co- consistency of the comprehensive.
Yeah, and we, and we went a little bit around on this at the last meeting because the code also says the planning board has to approve signage in this area.
Right.
In this particular zoning district. So, and Rob can jump in here, you know, my thought would be essentially the planning board would say no. And then they could both deny the planning board and the, they could go to the zoning board to appeal that.
Yep.
Both.
It actually looks like they flip-flopped, if I'm doing a little research. It looks like Cardiology Associates was at the twenty-five forty-six Balltown building that we were just discussing for St. Peters, right? So they moved. And now St. Peters is taking their space. To your point about the race to treat heart disease.
Mr. Khan, to the question that you had asked about sort of prior actions both by this board and the ZBA relative to this property. So there were a lot of negotiations that went on at the time with the planning board, as Laura pointed out, to reconfigure, um, traffic flow around the building, entrance on the front. So there was some give and take there for the recommendation that this board ultimately made to the planning board regarding signage. Um, I mean, the zoning board, and then there was a battle at the zoning board also on those same issues, so. What has happened in the past rarely is a binding precedent on this board. But in this particular case, even more so because there were some things, frankly, that the town wanted that we got some of as part of the negotiation to get, so.
Yeah, and, and actually, you know, just off of, my, my rationale relative to the Union Street property is that there was an emergency function that the building needed to be signed for. And then there was the overall ownership, Albany Med, right? But there was no, none of the sub, you know, renters on the monument sign had a sign there, right? And so I think for me, that's where if there's a line to be drawn, so for example, at the Balltown Road one, right? I probably could see making a recommendation that the single most primary owner of that building could have a facade sign, but not any one of the tenants. Right? And on this one, to say, based on that same principle, the main functions of this building, emergency and Albany Med, have been signed already. And we don't recommend putting another sign on. The monument sign should be sufficient. Because at the end of the day, folks, I mean, both on the planning board and also for the applicant on this, right? You know, this is gonna be sign central, right? I mean, it's, uh, it, it doesn't look good.
I agree, I mean, as a, from a planning planner department, I wouldn't recommend allowing individual facade signs on these buildings. I do think that the, the Balltown Road one, like you say, could be allowed one facade sign to mark the building, even if it's just a, an address sign or something, like if the building isn't under the umbrella of St. Peters, then, you know, but.
And that, yeah, that one we could deal separately, but I don't see that being more than one sign. I mean, this is not Mohawk Commons, this is not Mansion Square, this is not, you know, the, the, the Plaza, whatever, I don't know what name it has right now, on Knott Street. Right?
The used to be Shopright Plaza. Square.
Maybe still is, right? It, I mean, there, there's a different reason, and there we also have the ability to really constrain the size of the sign so that they are just really wayfinding for customers who want to go to these different places.
Uh, I, I think one of the concerns also is that every panel on the monument sign is the same color with the same letters, which makes it extremely difficult for people to distinguish it. Um, I think it gets lost in there. Uh, that's, that's my one concern with the monument sign, and it was the, the customer's concern as well.
Would there be an option for a directory sign at the main entrance, something that's small, that would be at a visible level as opposed to, you know, marquee letters that are on Union Street?
I, I just, at this point, I don't think the, um, the tenant is interested in that, I think they, they want to see this through. Um, I think, yeah.
But we would be, we would have a, the ability to give them permission to brand their portion of the monument sign?
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, they could come back with a package of different colors on the monument sign.
In other words, if they wanted Cardiology Associates to be branded.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't look right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't remember what the argument was for having the monument sign look the way it is, except for the fact that they might have all have been Albany Med.
Albany Med, right.
Organizations, right? Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, and even that, that would be something I think we'd be more open to from a consistency perspective, but even that makes the look of it.
Yeah, I mean, the monument sign is nice because, again, to scale, it's kind of a neighborhood. There's residential units across the street, and so it all looks singularly professional.
Yeah. I mean, look, I, I, I'm not gonna tell Albany Med or St. Peters, you know, anything about how they should conduct their business, right? But at the end of the day, most of these specialist organizations are referred to by someone else. And there's an address given and you kind of go there and you find it, right? The mon, the, a big sign on the facade just doesn't convey, you know, that same level of, um, of, um, of precision as to where this place is in there, right? They've, a, a, a person who's going to one of these places for service typically knows where they're going.
Yeah, you're not driving by.
Yeah, you're not driving by and say, oh, I think I need some cardiology work done, I'm just gonna drive in. Or, or maybe that's what they're going for, I don't know.
I, I think sometimes for a brand too, um, you know, something like that sign is, is something that, you know, their employees can be proud of, you know, seeing when they roll up to the building for work, you know, the, the patients can see it. I mean, it, it makes people feel good. I, I, I understand there's a ton of signage on that building and they're very big signs, but, um, I mean, they all, this sign would fall directly in line with what's there. Um, and I understand there's a big space available, but.
So Jamie, I'm sorry, is Capital Cardiology Associates an affiliate of Albany Med?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Right?
Yeah.
There's nothing on their website suggests they are.
They have a weird relationship, they, they actually are affiliated with Albany Med, they have a, I'm not sure, they're not branded as Albany Med, but they are like,
Providers.
They are providers of Albany Med, they do have an office in Albany Med as well. Um, I think my concern, and, and, and to your point, if, if Albany, someone from Albany Med is making a referral, they do have the address. And I think we also need to be mindful that Union Street is, has a particular brand in and of itself. And we don't want, you know, people going and staking flags because if you just watch the St. Peters and Albany Med battle, it's just sign, 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 this is my, you know, territory. And I think that's a slippery slope. Um, and we do want to maintain that family kind of walkability and, and, you know, that Main Street kind of situation on Union Street.
Yeah, I, I think in both of these cases, the precedent is the concern I have.
Okay.
Yeah, so hearing that, well, we can write our denial and then we can write also a recommendation. And I will just double check how it works, like, if the zoning board were to grant a variance and then the planning board still didn't like the sign. Rob and I will just double check that because of the weird sections of code that apply to this zoning district.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Also be looking for a project lead on, on this one as well, so if you're interested.
Can do them both, Nancy.
I can do them both.
Okay.
Alright, so since Nancy's doing them both, I'll co-work with Nancy. Alright, so that, that way we were, uh,
I'm both.
But I think we, but I think I'd like us to treat it as two, I mean, they're two independent applications, but I think having both of us.
They each have their own facts and.
They have their own facts and, yeah.
Alright, well, thank you both for.
Alright.
Okay, uh, moving on to the next discussion item. We have twenty-five oh-one Troy's Schenectady Road. Uh, let's see, the Capital District Jewish Holocaust Memorial, and we have Mr. Dumbling here.
Yes, I am, how are you? Good evening.
Good.
Glad to see you're all here and not, uh, watching Mr. Springsteen this evening. Chris Springsteen, do you guys, okay, anyway.
Okay.
Cool.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say that I'm recusing myself from this issue.
Okay, thank you. Um, did you want to give a quick recap of, of the presentation?
Previously, on the Capital District Jewish Holocaust Memorial, um, I came to you, uh, a little while ago, asking for an extension to our, um, planning board approval in light of the fact that we haven't raised enough money yet to build the memorial. Um, I am the new president of the, um, of the memorial organization. And, uh, uh, we've raised a fraction of the money that we need to raise for the project. On, and I, I came to you asking for an extension. And at that time, I said we probably need more than the, than the two years. Um, that's, uh, traditionally what's asked for. And at that time, uh, opened up the discussion of a possibly, uh, making it four years, um, which would be more, what I feel is more appropriate. Uh, cause I'm just gonna probably come back to you in two more years and ask you for another, for, for another two-year extension. Also, at that time, I said that perhaps we could take a look at it as saying, we get the four-year extension and I would come back after two years and give an update, which any good partner would do. Um, and that's what we would plan to do. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Khan?
Yep, so yeah, so, I mean, and Chris and I had discussed this for the last meeting. Um, so, so my only, so our main concerns, whether it's two years or four years, and we mentioned before, until the organization is actually financially able and ready to construct the memorial as planned, we really don't want to see any kind of clearing or site disturbance, right, on the property.
Correct.
So I think that's one of, right, I think that's one of our clear, you know, we really don't want to, you know, um, um, you know, violate that at all. So in terms of the two versus four, I mean, I'll ask this of the board, right? I still got this, uh, precedent thing hanging in the back of my mind, right? I would not have minded if, I, I think two years is actually what, within the context of our code, we could grant that, right?
So we researched it and when you get site plan approval, it's good for two years.
Yeah.
Unless the board extends the timeframe. And it doesn't actually send, say that the board can extend the timeframe for additional two years. I think two years has just been the general,
Yeah.
because once you get a resolution or you get a new resolution, we typically say, okay, two years from that point on. But it definitely, I think, has the flexibility to allow for longer.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Is it okay if I?
Yeah, 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 no, no, this is a discussion.
The precedence, which I, I agree with you. However, in this case, this is a not-for-profit organization that's trying to do good and trying to promote tolerance. And I think a precedence should be set that the, um, that the board should embrace this opportunity to set a precedence to support such an action.
So I mean, I'll, I'll, I, I know it's non-decisive and that's rare for me, but that's okay, it, we'll have a discussion. I could go either way on this one, but I actually don't want to do something where we're gonna, you know, say four years and others, nonprofits or other applicants come and talk about, you know, I've got this development here that I can't get done now because I don't have the funds for it and I want a, you know, four-year extension, right? Um, you know, if a for-profit developer were to do something like that, we'd look at that quite differently.
Of course.
Right?
Yeah, oh, go ahead. Oh, well, I was just gonna say, I think Dan brought this up at the last meeting though, is that, um, we don't see this type of application a lot. One, that we don't want them to start until they're fully funded and that we're working with them as, but two, I think Dan said when he's looking for investors, it's helpful to know they know that he has the. But two, I think Dan said when he's looking for investors, it's helpful to know they know that he has the approval for four years, which is different, I think, than a lot of other site plans we have. But if he can show that, like if he has this building out plan and it's a four-year plan and he's only got a two-year planning board approval, that could be problematic for trying to raise the money.
So the one thing I would add to this is that Route Seven is going through a comprehensive evaluation. And there is the potential that there could be a master plan that's implemented within a year to two years timeframe that might impact that area. So the concern, the one concern I have with a, a longer extension, uh, to four years would be that if that came, would you have to then rethink? Maybe they shorten the street or widen the street, they do something there, they add a bike lane or whatever it is, that might factor into your plans. So the, the reason I like the two-year option is that it gives you, it gives you kind of a deadline to work with. Um, would that be, if we move to a resolution, would that be effective two years from the date of when we vote, which would be, say, the next April meeting? Or is it the extension from November? That was a technicality I didn't.
So I actually think it's truly up to the board. So you, you could say two years from the date of the resolution or two years from the date of the last resolution and then put the new date of expiration in there. So you could have it be two years from November.
Right. So two years from November is effectively three years, right, on the calendar, two and a half. So, so look, it, you, you know what our concern is. I think we can talk among, among ourselves, right? But the key thing is, so I do have to ask a question to Laura's point. Doesn't actually a tighter timeline, you know, lights and fire on the feet of donors to, gotta get it done, it's the other way around?
I, I would say it, it's, it enhances our opportunity because, listen, we, we've already had approval for how long? I think it's been probably four years or close to four years. Uh, I think COVID was a big factor of the reason why we haven't raised the money. However, that being said, we have that much higher a hill to climb because of COVID and, and now after the fact, prices have gone up significantly since the original amount of money that we needed. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, a little bit.
So I, let me put it this way. We're an organization that's 100% volunteer. I'm an architect. I don't raise money, you know, this, I'm not a fundraiser. So I can't even begin to give you any indication whether it's, it's easier or harder. I have no idea. It's, it's a heavy, it's a heavy lift at this point.
All right. So I think we'll discuss, but I do have a difficult question to ask. At what point are extensions too long? For any kind of a project, be it a nonprofit organization or be it a for-profit developer?
Yeah. So I want to address an issue about the precedent. So that's to my mind, the least concerning part of this. Um, I think that first of all, it's going to be rare that people will come to you asking for a longer than two-year. Because it's just the, the situation that this not-for-profit is dealing with is different than a typical for-profit who, you know, they've got a business plan, they've got projections, they've got. So I'm not worried about this being a precedent. I think all the other issues that you've raised though are real concerns. So, um, the concern about potentially a different plan for Route Seven, I, I think is valid. And the concern about how long is too long? So, you know, I guess one of the concerns that I have is this is probably one of the most stable boards in the town, right? Like, there's people who have been on this board a long time. That's just the nature of the planning board, but, and I value the commitment of, of the planning board. But if you push it out too long, you could end up with a board who looks back and goes, what were they thinking? You know, so I, I, I think the longer circumstances change over time.
Yeah.
Mr. Khan, the point that you raised is valid. What's too long?
Yeah.
But I, and this is just a pushback, um, because I don't think it's, you know, I think that when we look at having a memorial like this in the town of Niskiuna that is representative of anti-hate and, um, a good place for we, us to bring people to our community, to show them, you know, what our community leaves in and wants to help. And you can put it, you know, you can put it on a map and it can actually map nationally. Um, to me, I don't think that in a, in a very unique case like this, a four-year extension is too long. I, I think that these types of situations, they take a long time to build, but it'd be something that we would really be proud of. And we worked really hard on it because there was a lot of, you know, neighborhood upsettedness and you know, the applicant took a step back and redesigned and added berms and added landscaping to address all those concerns. And I just feel like, and we understand why it's taking so long. Like to me, I understand why that would take so long. But I wouldn't want to give them the impression that if they don't get it done in a certain amount of time, that Niskiuna is no longer a place for it to be or something.
Let me piggyback onto that for a second. Since I've taken over, by the way, this is day one hundred and fourteen that I've been the president of the organization. I wasn't even on the board before this, so I'm just kind of getting up to speed. And in this period of time, I've reached out to five other memorials. Some of them you've probably very familiar with, like the one in Miami, the one in Philadelphia, one in California. And every one of these memorials took years and years and years to get up and running and to build and to raise the money. It's not unusual. So the two years was kind of, you know, the original extension, whatever the timeframe, it's kind of unusual. Um, for, it's really unusual for such a short period of time to get these going. So that's why I'm sort of trying to build this in. And again, I'm going to harp on this a little bit. We see you guys as a partner on this. I'm looking for a partnership in, in bringing us forward to make this a reality. And that's one of the reasons. If I can say to potential donors, yeah, this is not going to happen for a few years. We have the commitment of, of this town of Niskiuna to make this happen. And, and look at this, they, they're, they're working with us and they're giving us for, a four-year extension. That's meaningful, very meaningful. And, and that's what we're looking for.
Right. And, and so in that spirit, right, I guess the easiest way to do this is where does the board stand on this, right? Two or four? Right? Others to weigh in. Right? At some point, we're going to have to have a resolution.
Right? Yeah, I mean, I think you make great, I think you make a great case for the two years, but I do think this is pretty unique, however. Um, I am concerned about there being something in there about them needing to, I mean, I would assume they would have to accept whatever changes might happen through the comprehensive plan. Like, do we need to bake into this the fact that that process is happening and could impact what they originally agreed to? Or is it just?
I think I can address that.
Okay.
Just to agree. So the comprehensive plan is not going to affect stuff that's already approved.
Okay.
And typically what we're talking about is stuff that's not approved or to the extent that we're talking about a bike lane or that sort of thing, which I frankly love that idea, but we're talking about stuff that's within the town's right of way. So that's not going to impact what the applicant would be doing on the property that the site then that's approved, wouldn't be touched by that.
Understood.
I, I'll also add, we didn't get a variance for this. This was fitting within the original use that was stated in the, in the, um, for the use in that, on that property. So it's not something that's different that suddenly could potentially change or that we're asking for to be changed.
I just had a question, um, just for context. Did you see, when, when you're talking about having shorter, um, extension and worrying about raising money, did you see previously that there was a dip in contributions? Or, um, was it harder to raise money as you approached your deadline? Or is this, is this kind of like an assumption that you just kind of are trying to head off?
So I wasn't part of the board before. I wasn't part of that whole pro- back up. I designed the memorial and then I was not part of the board or part of the organization at all during that period of time. So, did I hear things? Yeah, kind of, things that, hearsay, not that I was part of. In the, in these last hundred and fourteen days that I've been part of it, when I have conversations or people bringing this up, eh, one or two have brought up, aren't you guys due for an extension soon? That, that sort of thing. It really hasn't been an issue, uh, to be honest with you. However, as we move forward, I can say, listen, we have full support of the board, of the town. Uh, and, and that's really wonderful, which is a complete, I look around, I look at these empty seats. What a, what a difference four years has made or whatever, right? I mean, it's, it's a pretty amazing thing where, where we are today with this memorial. So I'm not sure I answered your question directly.
Absolutely. Um, so then I guess my follow-up question would be, if you were reassured that the town is completely supportive, but would like a point of touching base at two years, do you think that that would be something that was solid enough for you to kind of take back to your considerate to say like, Niskiuna's invested. They do want to just touch base and make sure this is still, um, we're at a good place. And if we, you know.
I'm going to lean into that a little bit and say, I want to come back in two years. I think we owe it to the, to the town to come back in two years and have that conversation and say, hey, this is where we are. This is where we're going. This is, it just, so yes, I think that, and it helps us, right? What's our name out there? It shows that partnership. It's, it's really important, I think.
So the direction I was going to suggest was if we went with a four-year extension, we, you know, we have conditions on all resolutions, maybe we make it an annual presentation every spring to see where you are.
I wouldn't go with, I couldn't, wouldn't go annually, honestly. I'm, I'm cool with two, every two years. Two years goes by very quickly.
Okay. So at a midpoint, we could say there would be an update two years from where that is. Is that something that the board might be open to?
Leslie's got her hand raised, but I can tell you, we actually did that with Riversledge, if you guys remember.
Yeah, the, the, the updates part, so here, I, I'll say what I say after Leslie go, Leslie, please.
Yeah, I want to get my two cents in, sorry. So I've been waiting a few minutes here already. Um, I don't think it's fair to compare this to a regular commercial enterprise. In terms of fundraising, I think the four-year window is an advantage because people can make a donation and have the four years to get the money in. Uh, it, it, you know, it helps with structuring, uh, fundraising. And I think this is really a very good addition to the town. It's something we should be supporting townwide. I know not everybody in town will support it because there are people who are just totally against anything that recognizes the Holocaust is reality, but it truly was. Uh, but this is very different than a commercial enterprise that's going to go to a bank for a loan or a couple of banks to get loans. It's, it's got to come from citizens. There might be some organizations that can help. Uh, and some organizations might help more by helping with the fundraising than anything else. But it really will help structure the donations and all. And I think it's time they need COVID really didn't help at all in any of this. Uh, it became difficult to raise funds. You couldn't have the social events that normally help raise funds. People would like to go and be seen. And sometimes you get people making pledges and well, so-and-so pledged that I got to pledge this amount. So things that help that the economy is recovering, but it's not as good as it was. I think the four years is reasonable and I do support it.
I agree. I think that as someone who has done fundraising, if he had a million to go, he'd benefit from a shorter timeframe because that's how you, it, it's how you get people to make the move you need to close the gap. Given where he is in this process, the flip side of that is showing that you have the longevity for people to be willing to make the investment. So when I couple that with the uniqueness of the project and the potential long-term benefit, which I think is valuable, um, to the town, I would be in favor.
Yeah. I mean, it's the one thing that moves me off the fifty-fifty point, right? Which is that the, the rational argument here is the applicant is saying that in order for this project to be successful, they need four years. Now granted, any applicant that wants an extension for anything would make the same argument, but given a different nature of this project, given the role it plays in the town and the town's support of it, right? Um, so I mean, I think our poll is saying, Nancy, you didn't say anything, but. Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. You're recused, I'm sorry. So I think our, our, our straw person poll is saying that, you know, the board would be in favor of a four-year extension.
Yeah.
With a two-year update.
With a two-year update.
And then I think the other technicality is, is when do we start that four-year extension? Um, my opinion is the November date is locked in. I think that's a good date to just work off of as opposed to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Having a resolution.
Yeah, whatever the extension was, November was the timeline for me. It's the way that I would start, right?
November fourteenth.
Most rational sense, based on the last resolution.
All right, great.
Okay, so we'll bring, we'll bring that resolution to the next meeting and pre-share it with you and.
Yeah, and I guess I would like to condition that resolution, two things. One, definitely an update in two years. But an update at any time, I think, I don't know how we're going to say this or condition it, but that you, the board, whoever deems that something has changed materially enough that we should become aware of it.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
That results.
Of course.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
All right, moving on to the next item, uh, thirty-nine oh-five State Street, an application for site plan approval for a tenant change to a convenience store, a smoke shop.
The applicant's online.
Okay, we have someone from the applicant online?
Up here. Hello? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Sadie, is that how you say it?
Y- yeah. How you guys doing?
All right, good. How are you tonight?
I'm good. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Uh, did you want to give a quick recap of, um, what you're looking to do to move the business into the property?
Yeah, we're actually, um, do, you know, planning to open up like a mix of like, uh, you know, like, uh, convenience store that's like exotic drinks, uh, like Japanese, like foreign stuff. I gifts also and like, uh, tobacco, uh, which is like cigarette and cigar and like, um, yeah, like convenience store and like smoke shop, like EBD stuff, uh, stuff like that.
Um, the signage on the building, it was indicated that only the panel would be changed, correct?
Correct, but we actually, uh, found a different sign that I just, uh, emailed, uh, Laura for it. Um, yeah, because they, they want, the, the sign were too old, uh, we seen it and we were like, we realized that we have to change the entire sign.
Okay, so that information we can't use tonight, but what you can do is we can put it on to the next meeting application. So if you're comfortable with that, we would just table this until the next meeting.
Uh, I'm, I'm actually going out of the country, so I, I mean, uh, for a while, so I, I would rather like have everything done, like permits and stuff fixing that, you know, fixing the, the inside of the store to put like showcases and stuff like that. And then I can move to like the sign and stuff like that.
So you can do a, you can do tenant and separate the sign.
Perfect.
Okay.
I did have the question, um, which we, which we asked for, uh, thirty-four oh-five, thirty-nine. So when Suki was moving SNG Roofing.
Right.
The situation was very similar in which he had like four parking spaces at the front and then the, the majority of his parking space is in the rear. And, um, we did just want to make sure that there's a clear path for pedestrians to get to the front of the store. But very similarly set up to SNG Roofing.
Yeah, right now that traverses across, there's a break in the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then it's all asphalt to the front of the building.
Yeah, uh, there's like, I think about eight cars in the back and four in the front. Well, I think the, the previous, uh, guy that I talked to, it was a battery store. And he says that mostly customers come and grab like what they want and go like, they would stay like for about like at two minutes of, or three minutes inside the store and they just leave.
So are you only using, sorry, are you only using then a front entrance or is there a back entrance to the store?
Uh, there, there is a back entrance, but I would, uh, we would not, uh, use it. Uh, we, because the front entrance is what we're going to use. We, because the front entrance is what we're gonna use. We're gonna use the back for like emergency exit and stuff like that.
With regards to parking, even in the front, I noticed that the parking spots are rather close to the front of the store. Do you plan to put any, I'm not sure what they're called, but.
Ballards.
Yeah. Any kind of prevention from, because just thinking, just looking at that walkway, I don't know, maybe it's three feet, you know? And if people are coming out of the store, even there, I think there's a safety concern.
For the front?
Yes. So where you have your, your four parking spots, they're very close to the, the front of the.
Of the door?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I probably would like do, because you've seen there's like a, a concrete that blocks like these small concrete, like rocks from the building. Because I've seen a lot of places having the same thing. Yeah, these small things, you could just like put lines or stuff like that.
Yeah, I do. I do see the remnants of some that are there. They look kind of moved, but yeah, some type of barrier, even, yeah.
Yeah.
Even the ones that are more the vertical, ones that prevent like, you know, on the off chance that there's a, an accident.
Or you could even put like a sign, well, one of them should be a handicap parking space, I would think. So normally you'd have like a handicap sign there, or then you could have parking for smoke shop only signs or something that more clearly delineates it.
Yeah. So I'm saying that, and I forgot what we did with SMK and there was another one too, right? Remember, what was it? A liquor store? That, right?
Yes.
I think we need to do a little bit of site work on this.
Yeah. So we talked about two things with SNG's site. One was, would he want to like delineate a walking sort of area for the people from the back to the front on the outside of the building? And I think he decided that he didn't because it was so tight. And so then he made an entrance to the rear parking with a special way for people to be able to walk through the building.
I, I, I'll tell you from a consistency and from a pedestrian consumer safety perspective, I don't, having people walk up and down that small of a driveway from the back parking to the front.
Yeah, well, and I, I didn't think about it until Suey said, but if the cars, if there's four cars parked there and somebody's coming from the back, if those parking spaces are too close to the building, they're going to walk around the back of the cars into the street and then in.
I mean, so the, so the simplest solution there is to really have this place also open up the rear entrance.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just realized that too. I mean, we could use also the back entrance. You know, for that, for like the back, whoever parks in the back. But it would like, we will actually buzz them in basically like if, if we see the main cameras, we buzz them in like the door actually opened, stuff like that for the people that parks in the back. Because we had another location in, in Oakland, which is in California, same issue. So I think we're gonna do the same.
Is there sufficient lighting in the back of the building?
There is a what?
Is there sufficient lighting?
Lighting, yep. There, yeah, there is a lighting through all the building.
With, with the, how, how many employees will you be having? I'm, I'm, I don't know that this is, I'm sure this has been approached, but.
Yeah, we're, we're actually.
Parking for this? It just doesn't, it seems like it's so tight.
Well, it's grandfathered in.
Okay.
Yeah, the parking is.
Okay.
But when a new tenant comes, we like to make sure that we're making the best improvements that we can. And so the last couple of times we've had a site that looked like this, we've really focused on the pedestrians.
Yeah. I, I, I think we're gonna try to be as consistent and draw a line where pedestrian safety is concerned. Right? So I mean, I don't, I'm still weighing this concept of buzzing them in the back door. Ideally, we would have liked that to be an entrance, but I guess.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll probably do the same as the other guy, the, the previous owner. Just open like the back and the front door and have people in from both sides. I think that way it's, it's also safer for people in the back that with, yeah, I could.
Yeah, I think if you could do that, that would be the best thing.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, everything is ready. So from the back, so I, yeah, it's, I just realized that.
Yeah. So I'm not, and, and your little, the sketch that you made doesn't clearly indicate where the back entrance is unless I'm, I see it. Okay. It's what you label as exit.
Yeah. Yep. So I, I do better.
No, it's okay. I mean, I guess, yeah, you could do better, but so.
Yeah.
So they make a right turn to get out of. They pass right in between the closet and the bathroom to get out of the building.
Yep. There is a bathroom and there's the exit. Yep. Because basically that, that used to be a glass. So where the, the, the exit, there's like at the door, that's like a glass. So I, there's like a small glass right, right here. Yep. I mean, it's, it's not like a wall. So basically I could just knock that down and then it will be like full exit. And then the bathroom is going to stay nearby the exit. Like between the, the, the closet and, and the door of the exit, it's a glass. It's a glass wall. It's like half glass.
Yeah, I think we need a better depiction.
Explaining what a storefront is. So I think, I think what would be helpful is it, I think tenant changes seems to be okay. There's some site improvements that we're going to be looking for specifically, probably delineating some parking spaces in the front. So I think some simple striping and getting those temporary curb stops aligned or probably re affixed into the ground would be a good first step. What would also be helpful is if you could send a photograph of the back of the building so that we could actually see what that storefront looks like. And maybe some pictures of just where the back parking is. I know that's where staff would typically go. You wouldn't want to take up the, the parking on the front. But.
Yeah.
You know, those two items I think would be relatively helpful. Just looking from the aerial, I don't think there's really much greenery around this or any potential for it. So that's not, that's not a main concern.
I know you, I, I know you said you sent the sign, the new sign design. That's not relevant because we haven't, it was not submitted in time, but the name of this, the new store, will, you have a name for what it's going to be or is it registered?
Ah, yep. It's been registered with the state. It's, it's gonna be called Genie.
Genie?
Yeah, Genius Smoke Shop. You could see it's all over the United States if you like search. We got locations in Cali, Florida and Chicago, Michigan.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. So the signage will have to be a separate application, which is fine with. So any other questions or discussion items?
No. So I think we do need to see a better depiction of the site than the inside where the rare storefront entry will be.
So do we want to have it as a discussion item again for the next meeting or a resolution, hoping that we can achieve all of that in two weeks?
I think given the parameters of maybe just a little bit of more information on the back of the building and striping in a resolution would be fine.
As long as we can achieve all those things.
If it comes up that you're still concerned about it, we'll have to table it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And the resolution will be a resolution on tenant change with the, with the condition on coming back for site, come back for signage. What about coming back for the regular, the other side things we've talked about?
No, I think those would need to be resolved before the next meeting.
Good. I don't care with that.
It's Zachariah. Is it Zachariah?
Yeah.
So if you're hearing that, you're going to have to do all of that by this Friday.
By this Friday?
Yes.
I'm actually leaving tomorrow night. So I'll be out for eleven days.
It's the next meeting.
So, I mean, I, I have a friend that could do everything for me, but I'll be in the meeting. But I'll, I'll have him like do everything, like take pictures and explain better stuff.
Okay. I mean, we can put it on tentatively and see where we're at. And if it's not where the board needs it to be, then it'll have to be pushed off into May.
All right. Perfect.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, I'd recommend that you might want to consider having this all be done when you're back in May and having a complete package. That would be a, a very straightforward thing for the board to sign on, but that's just a recommendation. You don't have to go with that.
All right. I'll, I'll, I'll do that. So when is the next meeting in May? Like what day is it?
It is. Believe May thirteenth.
Thirteenth. That would be a perfect time.
Right. But you, but you would need to get your information in by.
The sooner the better.
Well, no, no, what's his?
Oh, May thirteenth would be, I think like May.
By the first.
Thank you.
By the fourth. So I have to focus, I have to show you pictures of the exit outside the door that for, for the parking, right?
Yeah. And come up with the striping plan for the front.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the next discussion item, twenty five sixty five Balltown Road. This is the Schenectady JCC, an application site plan approval for a yurt. Okay. And do we have anyone here?
Okay. Oh, you're here for the.
My name's Andy Katz. I'm the campus director at the Schenectady JCC.
Okay, great. So we have a additional structure that's going to be added. It's got a nice rendering to it here. And there was a site plan that was accompanied with the application here. Want to tell us a little bit about what the purpose of the yurt will be for?
We're not renting out on Airbnb.
I mean.
Yes, we could, but. It's a goal, it's our, it's to provide additional space for primarily for our summer camp. As we run twenty six acres or so. So we're trying to utilize our space, have more shelter type places for climate weather. We have upwards of three hundred children in our camp each day. So expanding, having more space would be beneficial to us.
Um, a couple of questions on the site plan. So I saw where it was located there. Looks it's by the tennis, by the court area.
It's past the tennis courts. There's a pavilion and it's taking the place of a volleyball court. So we're, aren't really used to this point.
Okay. On that drawing, there's other things that are boxed notes and bubbled. Are those part of a current application or improvements?
They're ongoing projects or things that may be looked at in the future.
Okay. So this is.
The, the focus of this is strictly the yurt.
Just strictly the yurt. Okay. All right.
The EV parking spaces, the splash pad and the upgrades to the.
Water city to the.
Yes, our building permits. So the architect put them all on. And then the addition is probably going to come to you guys later. But this is just for the yurt.
What's going to come to us later? There's an addition.
They're working on it.
Yeah. Is that, that section that's got the?
Yeah, that's not part of this plan. They've been working on it with us separately.
Okay.
But the yurt has a very tight timeline. So they're just pursuing the, the yurt with this application.
The other question I had was on the application, it said that the yurt was going to be on a concrete foundation and the rendering shows it on.
The rendering is from the company.
It's just from the company. Okay.
So it would be on a port Alaskan slab.
Gotcha.
Okay. How many people slash young people build a hurt hole yurt?
I would say the average camp group is somewhere around eighteen children with two or three staff. I would, I would see us having no more than two groups at a time.
Okay. I don't know if I missed it, but there was no people capacity on the flyer, right?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That's probably, I mean, the building inspectors will look at that. They might, I don't know if it rises to the level of having like a placarded number of people or anything like that, but the building inspector.
Okay.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing out of the ordinary here, right? This is all, they're allowed this accessory.
No issue with setbacks. The building inspector already reviewed it to make sure he didn't have any outstanding concerns. They've engineered it for snow loads and wind loads for New York. So we didn't have any outstanding concerns for it.
Yeah. I think having it on a port concrete slab is a better thing to do than what was depicted in the flyer.
It also helps with the accessory height structure because otherwise it would not come in under fifteen feet, but on the slab it will.
Yeah.
What is the top, the curved top? Is that like a window to see through or is, was that solid?
It can be opened so that air.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Good. All right. Um, I think this one's pretty straightforward. So we can probably have a resolution for next meeting. Anyone who wants to be a project lead on us is always helpful, but.
I think we can go to resolution.
I think it's, I think it's good.
Is there anything we need to do before next time or just?
I don't think, unless the board needs more information, I think this is sufficient.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the only thing I would say is maybe with the application, if just so it's a cleaner submission, that site plan that has those other things on there, if you could just have maybe the architect take those off.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
And then just highlight where the yurt is. That way somebody doesn't get confused in the building department that.
Yeah.
Think that we approved an addition to the year.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. How many, yeah, yeah. In fact, I was going to recommend, let's make this clean just for the yurt.
Sure.
Um, how many accessory structures would this property be allowed?
So the building inspector actually specifically looked into that. And because it's non-conforming and it's basically governed by planning board approval, it doesn't seem to have a, he's looked at past approvals and seen if they've ever needed area variances for additional accessory structures and felt that planning board approval of this would be sufficient.
Yeah, but in terms of a future accessory structure, we would just deal with these one at a time?
Yeah, we do just deal with them one at a time.
Okay. But there is no limit then for this property?
He did not see one because it's governed by the planning board site plan approval. So you guys would review all accessory structures? But didn't, because it's such a large property and it's a religious education facility, it doesn't seem to have the same restrictions as like a single family home.
And Andy, can I ask, do you, and I know you said it's primarily for the campers, which makes sense with rain and other things. Do you foresee using this also as a rental for like birthdays or, or any of that?
We rent pavilions rarely. So I can't say that it wouldn't be. I don't see it to be a major purpose, but I, could it happen a couple of times a year? Yes. But I don't think it would be a, it's not a main source of revenue that we're factoring or anything.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
It's out, it's also actually helpful for heat. It's not just rain. It's, it can be heat. And like the summers have just gotten hotter. So they find places to try and get the kids out of the direct sun.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to our last item, eight fifty Oregon Avenue, eight seventy five Stark Avenue, application for a lot line adjustment. Representative here for the applicant?
Ray Smith, eight fifty Oregon Avenue. So there was some corrections that needed to be made on my initial setup plans that you put in some calculations and stuff that needed to be addressed. I just received them today. I forwarded them to Laura. I know they're too late for this meeting. So I would ask that it would be put on for your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So just to recap, there's a lot line adjustment, which looks like it's adding a, a section of the property over on the Oregon Avenue side. Perfect.
Yep.
And.
So that's the old, right? The, the new is the next page, right? But there's details obviously that have changed.
Oh, it goes over further. Yep.
So it's, I think it's keeping in what we, what we prefer for lot lines that are more directional and not segmental properties. So it falls in conformance with that. A couple of questions. The application did have a few outbuildings on there.
Yes, I'm addressing that as.
Okay. Is that a separate item that the building department will deal with? Or is it looped into this application because we've seen this?
Yeah. So Sarah asked me that question and so did Rob, actually. And we were just chatting before the meeting. The actual accessory structures don't impact the lot line adjustment. They are out of conformance with the zoning. So I want to make sure that he has submitted something to bring them into conformance with the zoning. submitted something to bring them into conformance with the zoning before the chairman signs the application. But he has multiple avenues for bringing the property into conformance. And the actual lot line adjustment isn't affected by either one, it makes the situation better.
Right.
Right, but I think it's the last point you mentioned, right? Doing the lot line adjustment and then signing a.
Yeah, we don't wanna assign a site plan drawing that's not conformance with the zoning code, so, um. Ray and I have been working on a plan. I don't think he wants to go to the zoning board for area variances, he's going to try and do everything on his lot to conform with code. Right, right?
Okay.
Yep.
So the plan right now is to combine the wood shop with the chickens, get a building permit for that, and then move the carport into compliance.
So we could condition that on our lot line.
Yeah.
Approval resolution, right?
As long as we have the building permits in, I feel like that means he's then essentially legally bound to follow through with this.
Yeah, that's what we do for any applicant.
And I will note that not only does this make the, uh, lots more conforming, but it really makes sense, since I had indicated in an email. There is a huge drop from the Stark Avenue property to the one on Oregon. And it, it's not like a nice gentle knoll, it's a drop. And I actually don't think the, if you say it to miss, this myth is actually of any use to the current owner up on Stark. The elevation change is just very dramatic.
And is Ms. Gold also, um, indicating in an, in the email earlier to us that she worked on similar, similar site plan projects, so she would be happy to be the project lead on this, just to be listed as it?
I had volunteered to be a project lead, I think two meetings ago.
Oh, two meetings ago, that's.
I reported.
Alright, so we'll list you as a project lead, thank you. Um, any other concerns or discussion items from?
Um, so Rob, just a question, do you think that the surveyors should remove those accessory structures from the lot line adjustment when we're recording it, because they're essentially gonna change with the building permits? Or do you think we should leave it as is and just make sure that the resolution is conditioned?
I think that we're fine as long as the resolution.
Has the conditions, okay.
Yeah, I would feel better actually if it was as is and then.
And then it's very clear with the resolution that the building permits will adjust those things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yep, yeah, that's gotta be clear, hopefully we can get there.
So a resolution for the next meeting?
A resolution for next meeting.
Alright, thank you very much.
And we'll have this updated information too, right? So we can.
You won't be last next meeting, Ray. You won't be last next meeting.
Just don't promise that you're not behind Airbnb.
Um, so that wraps up discussion items, uh, moving on to reports, we did talk about the zoning code updates. Laura, did you want to add anything that was not in addition to short-term rentals?
Uh, not unless somebody thought of anything since that, oh, just code updates? Yeah, so mostly, we talked about this last time, we know we have to do some work on the fees.
Right.
And then I, I don't know if we want to do this or not, but one of the things we set aside the last time that we were reviewing the zoning code, which we didn't fully adopt, was we have the neighborhood mixed-use district, but we haven't actually applied it anywhere. So I don't know if we want to relook at that, or we just want to do that another day.
So the goal would be to remove that?
No, 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 to place it somewhere, we have the zoning district, but it's not placed.
So pre-COVID, there was a committee, I was actually
Yeah.
A member on, and we were going to take a deep dive into what a mixed-use neighborhood
Right.
would look like and where we could do it. So we were going to take a hypothetical for your fifty acre lot and see what it would be to develop it with the current code and, and regulations, and then what it would be if we could insert mixed use and have, you know, so you could just see the pictorial what it was. Um, we started to break that down and look at everything and then.
Yeah, that's what happened.
Really felt to the wayside.
And we had some good neighbors that were helping us.
Yeah, it, it does have a lot of merit to it, I think it's definitely something that could be inserted into the town, or could maybe overlap a C N district or replace it in, in certain areas. So if, you know, there's a way to start that committee back up, I think it would definitely be.
Yeah, I think we would need that committee back up before we actually.
Yeah, and I think it, you know, both the short-term rentals and the neighborhood mixed-use were heavy lifts, which might have been part of the reason they were set aside, because we had a timeline for doing some of the other stuff.
Yeah.
On our last zoning code.
Right.
And so if this timeline gets accelerated, it may be that the neighbor, but we could try, it's like what we don't want is be behind on the code and then have a development come in and not have it be ready.
So agreed, and again, we were thinking about the whole O D H property, et cetera.
Yeah, that's mostly what we were looking at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I do think that we do need to hit short-term rentals first.
Warmest, right?
Hey, enlightened with what, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Um, is this the district we were trying to create for the O D half area? Is state ever used to control of it?
Yeah, that's where we were looking at, conceptually, what would it look like if we developed it with the code that we had written? Or if it were, if we would wanna tweak it, and then we need to actually adopt the overlay zone. I mean, we have the zone, but we need to actually put it somewhere on the map.
But that's where we intended to put it.
Yeah, but I don't know if you guys remember, interestingly, when we started to look at putting it on the map, there was a little pushback on the neighborhood mixed-use code that we adopted, which was why then David said that we had a bunch of neighbors together and we were gonna try and visualize what exactly the code would do.
Yeah, and the initial, the, the initial meetings were really good.
Yeah, they were.
There was a lot of good vetting out, there was a lot of good information that we started to collect, and it literally just halted.
And I will know, I still have some concern about the viability of this. Not the kind of neighborhood people moved to this year before, but it may still be viable, but I'd love to know if there's some other theories that have done something like this and found it works.
Yeah, they're definitely, I could.
Yeah, and there, and there may be opportunities where there's commercial districts in town where a large swath of parcels collectively could become available. You know, whether that be up Reunion Street or someplace else near a commercial district, where if that was an option, you're going to see a much different development pattern than what you see now.
Beneficial to the town if we write it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we should set a target to get it done this year.
Yeah. We should.
Yeah, it's, um, okay, so we're glad that one's a list.
Okay.
Alright, um, next one is project submittal timeline update. Uh, Laura Clark have anything to add since the last meeting?
Do not, I'm sorry about that.
It seems like everyone knows now, right? So I guess the key question I have is, whenever we do open up the code for making amendments, we should write that into the code, right?
I think it would be helpful at least to put the process into the code.
Yeah.
I, I, it was interesting because I was, um, I did some work for the town of Dover. And, uh, I went on their planning board site and they actually have a written notice that they put up every month, I don't know how difficult that would be or how time-consuming, but it literally has. If you want to be here, you need to have this submitted on this date, and it, it was just interesting.
Updated every month?
It was updated every month, and again, I don't know how heavy of a lift that would be with, with what you folks have to do, but you want to know when it could be submitted, check out our website, the calendar's there, it was just very interesting, and I thought I'm gonna bring that up in a time, I think.
I think, I think you can do that, and it wouldn't have to be updated every month, just plan out the whole year and have if you want to be at this meeting, this is the date, because that's actually.
Except when there's gonna be.
Yeah, it could just be a P D S, where you had the meeting date and then you had the middle timeline to the right of it.
And just plan for the next eclipse and all that. But I do think it needs to be.
Go, it was totally worth it.
Yeah, it was, I do believe it should be, um, it should be, uh, embodied in the code in some way or form, and I think, I'm glad to see that a few applicants kinda know it and accept it.
Yeah, I thought that worked well tonight.
Good, okay, um, over to commission business, anybody have any, any board members?
I, I just have a quick question, so I, I noticed quite a bit of development happening on River Road across from Capel. There's, like, I'm assuming those are just, uh, regular planning department, single lot homes?
Yeah, so on the corner of River and Edison Woods, there's a pretty substantial parcel, like I think maybe two or three acres that had a vacant home. Um, the vacant home was removed, demolished, the owner came in, um, the permit, as we understand it, is just to replace it with a single-family home.
Okay, there's quite a bit of clearing going on.
There was, so, um, the original permit was for less clearing than actually occurred, and so he's working with the engineering department. Because there was so much clearing, even though it's just a single-family home, he probably has to put up stormwater controls. Um, just because the area is so large, but it won't ever come to the planning because it is just a single-family home that's allowable on a single parcel, it's just a very large parcel.
Right, and there's a parcel a little further down that's for sale.
Yes.
Right before the, the fields, right?
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember who owns that, you guys would know the name if I said it. Rossi, maybe?
Okay.
Um, that parcel is essentially Edison Woods Phase Four. Um, there's a paved stub off of name escapes me, I think Lamplighter, I'm, I'm probably just wrong about that, but there's a paved stub off of the subdivision that sort of curves into becoming Edison, and, um, there was originally a subdivision of like twenty lots there. It never was approved, and it's not an outright allowable use, and there are a lot of wetlands and there's a channel. But there could probably fit, you know, you'd have to lose some of those lots because it was developed in a time when the wetlands probably weren't fully delineated and the town may not have had the stream channel, which it does now. Um, but there's still, um, there's still a possibility for single-family homes to go in there.
Okay, yep.
But you haven't seen any clearing, just the for-sale sign there, right?
Yeah, just the for-sale sign there.
The big clearing is on the corner of.
I'm just thinking ahead.
Yeah, well, no, I actually think the whole quarter looks a little different because Joel also cleared for his two lots on River Road. You know, Kelz is pretty clear, then that lot just went down, so driving down that quarter is a little bit different right now.
You, you, you take it in when you're there every day and you realize that, you know, our decisions do have consequences.
Yeah.
Good or bad, I'm not giving a value judgment, but the River Road does look significantly different.
Yeah, clearing is hard.
Um, so on that note, because I'm fairly new, the clearing that occurred very different, but the mixed-use, let me think of it. The clearing that is between Channel Six and C V S, so the homes have been removed. But that is in, he was approved just to clear them, or there's a plan for that?
Just to take them down, there's no planning board approval for anything on there, and he actually combined those lots, so there are five homes. He combined those lots at the county level with a kind of archaic abandonment of subdivision procedures. So he could take those four houses down, but he actually can only put a single house back, because it's only one lot. Without planning board approval for a subdivision or site plan or something like that. There is, that, you know, the planning board had a plan that they recommended to the zoning board, but the zoning board denied it because it was fifty-four area variances, which they just weren't willing to do, um, just, just a lot of area variances, so. As far as the town was concerned, that proposal died, it did get litigated and it's in the Court of Appeals.
Appellate division.
Appellate division, okay, and, um, haven't got a ruling on it, but as far as we are concerned, there's no planning board approval and nothing further can happen on that property without.
Yeah.
Them.
And for whatever it's worth, or go back to the comment you made about the River Road property that did the over-clearing, I mean, this just happens all the time. We, we, we don't have a stiff enough penalty for.
Clearing.
For over-clearing.
Well, can I speak to this? Because I've been on a bunch of, like, pre-planning meetings with developers, when we've had some issues, especially with mature trees we wanted to keep. And I think part of it is, you know, there's been projects where there's been mature trees that have a value to them. So whether you charge a hundred dollars a tree or five hundred dollars a tree, the tree might be worth several thousand dollars to a lumber mill. So I think what it comes down to is, if you have a delineation that is to be non-clear and there is, you know, a stipend that's asso- associated with whatever the clearing is, it has to be enforced.
Yeah.
And if it's enforced a couple of times, the developers all talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Going to understand that's what it is. I think part of it is just even the monetary levy on whatever the tree values are, doesn't necessarily fall in lockstep with what the developer thinks
Right.
What the town thinks.
Right.
And I, I, we've had developers point-blank say that they're going to cut the trees. And there's just, I think it's a partial, it's enforcement and partial, if you gotta hit them, you gotta hit them.
Yeah, and, and that's why the concept of a stipend or some kind of escrow fund where they.
We actually talked about this because, um, we're struggling with potentially some of the trees on the Hilltop subdivision have died. Um, you know, the Lucy Arbroski, yeah, some of them may have died during construction. So our code, our tree code right now, actually requires that if a tree is designated for presid- preservation during planning board subdivision review, the developer has to prevalue it, has to have a certified arborist come out and say, this tree is worth X amount of dollars. And like, to your point, David, it could be like ten thousand, you know, and then that's the money that we use to collect. But without getting that prevalue, it's like almost, it's so hard to enforce because it's, it's like going backward, and I haven't been able to get an arborist to come and say what a tree is worth, so then they ended up, so then they end up just getting the five hundred dollar fine.
Okay, but what, so what prevents, what prevents us from working out a contract with some arborists to say, when you get called, please come?
So I think there's, I mean, we were actually talking about reviewing that code because we haven't done it, but I mean, if we're to the point where we're ready to do it, what you will require as part of the subdivision review is that the developer gives you.
That money and.
You know, the values of the trees that you're designating, a tree council can give you recommendations, the planning board actually designates the trees that they have to save.
So this adds a number three to this section of our, of our agenda? Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we, we need to, it's just been languishing and I, I have yet to find a developer that didn't over-clear.
No, it really, and like.
Tragic what happens, I mean, I love the new softball field at the high school, but my neighbors like had a wooded backyard and now they have nothing.
Yeah, right to the property line.
And the school, yeah, but it's, yeah.
It's, I know in that case it's the school, but.
Yeah, it's, but yeah, I mean, look, when we think about climate, when we think about the environment, right, maybe because we didn't do it before, it's fine, but I think it's something I think we should think about.
Yeah, no, I can, I can bring that process to you guys, we can check it out, we can tweak it if we want, and then get ready to start enforcing it. I don't care that, we actually just recently had a conversation with the supervisor and attorney Finn and that said we've gotta
Yeah.
We've gotta either follow this or not, and it's pretty strict code, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good observation, we've gotten a lot of calls about that intersection.
Any other items? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think Chairman.